Hello, everybody. Hello, everybody. We're going to read the bean. I'm sorry. I'm sorry, before we do that, we're going to have a group call.
Sorry that you can stay standing. Roberto Garcia, he's absent, but he has been excused because of the gentleman's family. Francisco Estrada. Oscar Hoffman. Amy Ish. And Stephen Kim.
Present.
And ready to begin?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I'd like to report as the board took no action in the closed session. Okay, so I'm going to entertain a motion to adopt the agenda, except that we have some folks with us today who need to leave a little bit early. So I'd like to make a change in the agenda and move item D1, which is our annual audit report from business to revenue consent items. So I'll entertain a motion to adopt the agenda with that change. Move we adopt the agenda with that change?
I second.
Okay, we have a motion and we got seconds. So all in favor?
Well, Mr. Chair, I had a concern regarding the previous minutes in the, can't find the section here.
We're going to go into that in the consensus. Right now, we're just going to adopt the agenda. Present the agenda. So all in favor?
Aye.
So four to zero. To adopt the agenda. Okay, now it's time for communications, presentations, acknowledgements.
Yes, we have, can you hear me? Happy New Year, everybody. We have an acknowledgement tonight that we'd like to start off with. And is Oscar Ramos in the audience? Oh, there you are. Can you come forward? So we are so proud, Oscar, that you are part of our family, our Salinas City family, and that you have brought such recognition to us. And so we wanted to present to you just a small token of our appreciation for all of the extra efforts far and beyond what you do as a classroom teacher, for your basically community service, for your love for students, and for your complete dedication to serving our migrant population. And so we wanted to award you today with this little kind of plaque. And it is an article from the California. And we're going to give it to you and we're going to take it back. Because they were not satisfied with how they actually, how it came out. So we're going to redo it. But we wanted, we already had it here. And so we're going to go ahead and present this to you on behalf of our board and. We're going to replace it a little bit.
Well, if I could turn this into little pieces, I would provide it up. That's a good idea. Thank you, appreciate it.
And Oscar, you're hot.
And if you did not get to view the documentary on the 28th, it's going to be. Actually, we'll probably keep that one still here. We'll hang it up in our hallway. But you'll get a new one that's perfect condition. Okay? Thank you. I shouldn't say take it back. We were going to replace it. If you didn't get to view the documentary on the 28th, I understand it's viewing again on the 18th of January?
Yes, Monterey area and San Francisco area, they had their pledge week, so they couldn't. You can't mess with their pledge week. So they're showing it this coming Monday, the 18th at 10:00. But you can also stream it online already at their P S dot org website.
But we're so proud of you.
Any other acknowledgements? Okay, employee organizations.
Welcome to all board members and superintendent. Teachers came back today. I came back with a cold. Everybody else was just tired. I do want to say a little bit about Oscar and his, the documentary this part of. And I thank the board and the superintendent very much for honoring him and recognizing the work that he does. And I know his story, his story is so important to our area, to the state of California, to teachers, to the public. And I feel very strongly about kind of talking to people and making sure they know about it, about the documentary, and that it is something that should be watched. Anybody that lives here should watch that video to see the different sides that maybe you don't, you know, maybe we're not all aware of or not as experienced in. So I thank you very much for honoring him. And I just want to say that I'm very proud to be his friend. Thanks.
Okay, superintendent.
Yes, well, it's actually been five, I guess, school days since our last board meeting. But, and Ashley Carroll, you went, you came back with a cold. I went out with a cold. But I'm glad that I'm better now. But since the week of the 14th through the 18th of December, a couple of things happened that I think were, we should recognize. It was, we had a multi-school presentation on Almenyo that was given. And though the, you know, though the audience was lean, we did that as a forum to our communities that are in the flood zone to build awareness around potential flooding. So that happened on, I want to say December 15th. And also, I was able to attend a special presentation at Mission Park. When you give these special invitations, you know, I usually, if I can, fit it in my calendar, I go. And it was just adorable to watch. I think the second graders do a little presentation. But Mary Pritchard, who is our newest principal at Rwanda Dual Immersion Academy, still serves in the role of our migrant director. And she led one of the most fantastic winter programs I've ever been at. And it was on Sherwood Hall, I think it was December 17th, was it 17? And we had hundreds and hundreds of parents show up and lots of kids presenting from multiple schools. And it was just a delightful winter program. So I thank you, Mary, for all of your efforts. I had to take a lot of time and energy along with being principal for you to pull that off. It was just absolutely a great success and a delightful program. And this week, well, actually, last week, those teachers were off, teachers were here. So I showed up a little bit late on Monday morning. It wasn't a scheduled workday for me. I actually had it as vacation day. But I showed up and I couldn't find a parking space outside in the parking lot because we had so many teachers here attending step up to writing training. And that went on on the 4th and the 5th. And so that was great to see teachers really involved in learning how step up to writing protocols can be used with our new Common Core writing standards. And I know that Eureka Math training also happened. I was able to read the comments from the teachers on that training. It sounded like it was very, very informative. I didn't want more. And then also, I know that, and so I thank Ms. Sanders and her team for all of the efforts that they put. Because all week long, there was one training going on for either our classified or certificated staff. Saturday, they had the boot camps. The boot camps are still happening here for our newest teachers. And they're still coming and they're still learning. And they're still excited about being in our teaching profession. On the 5th of January, I was able to do a presentation to Santa Lucia Rotary on my Cuban trip. And that was really an exciting time. On the 7th and the 8th, we had administrative training going on here at our office. So all of our site administrators, vice principals, principals, and district leadership team came together and we covered a whole bunch of topics, a lot around leadership. But during that same time, we had the steps to brilliance training that happened on Thursday and Friday, beginning with the administrative team on Thursday afternoon. And about 70 parents showed up on Thursday night. It was such, it was such a joy to see our parents really engaged in technology and early literacy applications. And they're really excited about this potential. On Friday, the training continued with our teachers. I think we had about 30 teachers that showed up, TK to the second grade teachers. And in the afternoon, we continued with librarians, instructional aides, some of the after-school staff showed up. So some classified employees that were very interested in the application also attended. And Mary, thank you for helping us on that end. So that's all I have to report.
Yes, I think I'll go first. Well, Mrs. Ish and I attended the training for steps to brilliance. And it was very exciting. I think it showed great potential for our preschool people, our pre-K, K1. It seems to me a marvelous program. And I hope the teachers take advantage of it. I thought I'd agree with myself.
Thank you, Mr. Hoffman. Ms. Amy?
Ditto what Foster said. The other thing was, we, the real exciting thing about this program is that it toggles from English to Spanish with just a click of a button. So Foster and I paired up and we did ours in Spanish. Of course, we went back to the English constantly to make sure we knew what we were doing. But I agree with him. It is the most exciting thing out there for little ones, preschool, I think first or second grade. And I can't wait for the big launch so that all the children in Salinas have that opportunity to use this. And then Francisco and I, and I think Roberto, were at the La Posada event at Lincoln School. And I loved it. I went with my great niece, who was in the dual immersion program over there. And it was so exciting for her as an English-speaking child, who's now in first grade, who's been in dual immersion through second year, to go to something where the entire evening was in Spanish. And she was just sort of taking me through the evening and translating for me. And all the instruction, the directions, everything were in Spanish. I was so impressed with the way she did what she was supposed to be doing. And it was all in Spanish. And then she was telling me what I needed to do because she was translating for me. It was fabulous. What a great event. Huge turnout. And they fed all those people. They had a wonderful, wonderful meal. It was just a really nice way to start the holidays.
Buenas tardes, amigos. Good evening. I also went to La Posadas. I was utterly impressed and amazed at how beautifully this was put together. Congratulations to the staff in that school. It was outstanding. The tamales were delicious. And just a great event to attend, to be a part of, to witness. I also spent the holidays in Reno, Nevada, won a little bit of money. But above all, it's nice to be back. And I want to wish everyone the best of 2060.
Hello, folks. Welcome back. Happy New Year to everybody. And really enjoyed the break, but let's get back to work, I guess. Replies, predisconsères.
Can I ask, I'd like to just say some, yes, Ashley, there were two items that were brought up last meeting. One was around benchmarks. And Ms. Sanders is going to do a presentation tonight around that. And the second one was bylaws. And I think they're posted on the website. So I think we hopefully address those two concerns that were brought up at the last meeting.
Mr. Chair?
I also have a concern. I'm going to voice it at this moment.
Yes.
In the last meeting, my concern is on the determination of dates, time, location for regular meetings. I don't know what common practice is in this school district, but the third line on page, it's page five, row number five, the superintendent is authorized to designate and change the time of the place of the meeting. I would, I would like to know if we can reconsider that and amend it so that it reads either in consent with the board or in conjunction with the board president.
I'm sorry, I'm a little bit lost. Where do you read?
This would be page, this is the.
It's two of eight on the list.
From last, last. How do you want to change it?
That if a meeting is to be changed, it would be changed, it can be changed by the superintendent, but in conjunction with the president.
Well, I think the bylaws specify if there's going to be a change of meeting place, that it needs to be noticed that. Do you want to strike that? Because did we, I don't believe we authorized it in the.
I think the, I mean, your concern is well heard. I think the intention of that particular clause is to ensure that, I mean, the person who's going to know most likely when an emergency meeting needs to be held is me or the superintendent. And so the superintendent would have to, normally, the practice would be call up the board members to show, to see if we're going to have a forum to even host a, you know, to hold a meeting. So most of the time, that's the way, you know, when a meeting is going to be held, we have to ensure we're going to have a forum here to be able to hold that meeting. But it's really, just gives you the ability as, you know, the lead of the organization to know when an emergency occurs, that you have that ability to call a meeting. But I think that's the intent of that. The practice is we call you up because we have to know that you can be present. And we have to know that you're going to be, you know, for us to hold a meeting, we need a forum. So we're not going to probably host a meeting where we don't think a forum will be present. We just wouldn't do it, most likely.
Do you want to add in pursuit to the bylaws? I mean, I misunderstood.
Well, the bylaws would accommodate putting in something like the superintendent along with the board president.
I think the bylaws are very clear about who can call meetings when. You want to strike that? We can strike it out. That one sentence seemed to be problematic, right?
Well, either way, what I'm trying to say is it should, it should be a decision of the chair. It should be, I believe, a recommendation of the superintendent with the approval of the chair.
I don't think that we had any intent to change the bylaws or how things work. I blame that. Right?
I'm okay.
So to bear the motion to, actually, we're not there yet. Individuals, does anyone address the board on items that are not on the agenda? Do you have anyone in public who'd like to speak? Okay. Say none. Moving on to consent items. So all the matters listed in the consent resolution will be enacted by one motion authorizing actions indicated. Were those items so designated, do I have a motion to adopt the consent agenda? Or do we have actually any concerns or is there anyone who wants to pull that?
I don't want to pull this item because I don't want to vote on it. I just had some questions about the preschool. And that's item five, resolution for the preschool annual contract. I think the annual contract is great. I just had, I just wanted to understand the preschool setup a little more. I don't know how many schools have preschools at them. It was all numbers, you know, the numbers of the minutes and the pay. But I don't know, like, do we have a preschool at every school site? Do we have preschools? Like, how many preschools does this, you know, represent? And where are they? I was just curious about that. So it has nothing to do with approving the contract. It was just, I would love to hear more about preschool.
So would you like that on a future agenda item? Or would you like us to provide you that information individually? How would you like that information?
Well, I don't know if any of the other board members are interested in preschool because I would be happy to sit down and talk individually. If anybody wanted to hear more about preschool.
Well, we had a, we had to have a study session last year on preschools and.
Oh, okay. It was before we came on.
Yeah.
Look, we can certainly share that information, especially with you and Francisco, you know, that you would be, that you would just be more apt to. When you see these things on the agenda items, you will know what we're talking about. So we can do that. I'll share that.
Thank you. That was all of it.
Do we have a motion to adopt the consent item agenda?
So move.
Second?
Second.
Move by Mr. Estrada, second by Mr. Hoffman. All in favor?
Aye.
Four to zero, motion carries. Okay, so now we're going to move to item D1, which is the Brinneck Trini Day and Day.
Mr. President?
Superintendent?
It's my pleasure, Dan Williams, Bill Williams, principal with V T D, the joint version of that, to present the results of our annual audit that was presented to the MCO and the state.
Bill, thank you for coming in. Fresno, safe drive.
Beautiful weather day. Thank goodness. Well, if you think if you were new, I usually, believe it or not, I can read your nice faces. I forget names, I'm terrible with them, but I can tell who I've spoken to before and I see a few faces here. So every school district in California and community colleges require to have an annual audit each year. And part of that audit is to ensure that the district is in compliance with certain state compliance requirements as far as some grants go on attendance is obviously a big part of that, as well as testing select federal grant programs within this audit. And then there's the financial side of that where we go and verify your unaudited actuals that are prepared by the business office. Then we develop your audit. So those of you that are new, and even the old timers will say that have been on the board for quite a while, I will go through and highlight just a few areas. One especially that's quite easy to read and it's, I think, a good section for new board members to know that it's there. And it's actually the only section of the audit report that is on the district's letterhead. So if you remember that, you can spot it pretty easy, plus it's in the front of your audit report. That begins on page five and it runs through page 12. And that's called the management's discussion and analysis. It is really meant to be almost like a Cliff Notes of your audit report. There are summary tables in that document. The business office helps update some of the budget assumptions and fiscal highlights of the year. And then all of the actual financial information, we drop in there to ensure that it agrees to the audited financial statements because there are some changes when we have to put the report together. So that's a very good section to read, especially if you're a new board member. Even if you've been around to all that, it's probably the most important section in there to read. Page 13 in your audit report is your statement of net position, which is basically a balance sheet for the district as a whole. You're used to in your internal reports and your budgets, looking at funds. You have your general fund, cafeteria, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. This financial statement right here is your balance sheet for everything kind of mushed together. So your fixed assets are in here, the district is tracking those, depreciating those, the district's long-term obligations, the bonds, certificates of participation, your post-employment benefits are contained in here. So it's just kind of mushed everything together like a business would represent. If you look towards the bottom of the page, we're not used to seeing negative numbers at the bottom of this page. So I'm going to explain that. What triggered that was governmental accounting standards board statement number 68 was implemented this year. And that had to do with agencies that participate in the STIRS and PERS pensions, recognizing their proportionate share of the unfunded pension liability for STIRS as a whole and PERS as a whole. So every single district, community college, anyone else that has retirees or has made contributions into STIRS and PERS, there is a large unfunded pension liability at the STIRS and PERS level. We know that rates are going up, employee rates are going up to deal with that situation. So that liability was booked this year for Salinas City Elementary School District along with everyone else. That amounted to about a $55 million decrease in the net position of the district as a whole. That number, we are hoping, as everyone else is, will shrink as the years go on because there are, obviously, there are plans in place to fund that pension obligation at the STIRS and PERS levels. Rate increases, hopefully, if the market straightens out, that's going to help as well. So those big numbers were really triggered by GAZU 68. It's kind of startling to see it. It's a very large number. It's a multi-billion dollar pension liability, but that is, your share of it was about $55 million. So you're not alone, everyone else is saying this as well. Any questions on GAZU 68? Like I said, we're hoping, everyone's hoping that number is going to drop. So for everybody.
Could you just give us a little bit, just, does everybody understand that obligation? Are you there? Okay, so you're comfortable with it? Okay. Well, not comfortable with it.
No. No one's comfortable with it. Right. Exactly, yeah. And it's much like when you recognized your post-employment benefit obligation years ago, that started coming on the books for your retirees. This is very similar to that, but it's now dealing with the retiring pension pool, unfunded portion of that. So again, it was new this year, so it was kind of eye-opening to us as well. We alluded to this last year during most of our board meetings that we attend at least, letting people know. There's been a lot of letters coming out. Superintendent, I'm sure you've gotten inundated with a lot of information on GAZU 68. But until you kind of put the pencil to the paper, you just don't know what you're dealing with yet. So other than that, your general fund, $75,000 increase during the year. I don't know how long to hit that number. That was real close to zero. But that's a, that's a good number right there. The reserves are still right around 3% this year, which is the state's minimum. Obviously, as auditors, we like to see a number higher than 3%, but we're working towards that and the budget process is very complicated. that and the budget process is very complicated. You have the LCAP situations that you're dealing with and trying to spend the gap funding money that's coming in from the state, so much better fiscal situation, obviously, for school districts now than it was 10 years ago. The other long-term debt the district has is on page 42. This does not include that pension liability, as the note now says, long-term obligations other than pensions. So the largest debt right now is really construction-related, is the GEO bonds, which are funded by the taxpayers, which is a great type of debt to have. There's about $17 million of certificates of participation outstanding, and then the other liability down there at the bottom of that table is about $4 million of your post-employment benefit obligation that has to also be recognized. We had one finding that was, kind of came up a couple times this year and other districts as well, was the undiscobulated count of student qua, how they're qualified in the state's database, whether they're free, reduced, foster students. We had quite a few districts this year that were having issues with the state system and their meal tracker system, whatever they're using, to kind of make sure that all the free and reduced kids are classified correctly and then the students that dropped off from free or went to paid, but that also got updated up on the state side, and that's kind of where the situation happened here. So that was corrected really quickly. Actually, as soon as we found it, everybody kind of got together and figured out what caused it. It shouldn't pop up again, but that's already been corrected and submitted to the state. So there were no other findings. Federal grants that we looked at looked good. There were no actual attendance findings at sites. Obviously, attendance is very important. And then none of the other state grants or programs that we audited had any findings either, so the administration's doing a very good job in kind of making sure everything's being done the way it should be. So with that, it's a very good report again, very good audit.
I have a question. Okay, on page 96.
Put it in the back.
Yeah, it has a finding, it has a finding on associated student bodies.
Right, that is.
What does that mean to our district?
That is your student body, the cash at the school sites.
So is that like PTAs and PTAs?
No, it would be money that is collected by the students and maintained by the school's office. It's separate from a PTA or a PTO or a booster. They can kind of do their own things and that's out of your control, which is the way it should be.
Yeah.
But if the students do something, the teachers do something, and they keep the money on the school site and your, say, your office manager or whoever's there reconciles that cash and deals with that, that's the situation we're talking about there.
Can someone give me an example of what that would be?
Maybe Jogathon money?
That's what they don't do.
If the PTAs don't do it.
Lost textbooks.
Oh, oh, okay.
Any cash coming in that is, let's just say, outside of PTO, PTA groupings, has to go in then to the district office and that becomes underneath that.
It's very minimal in this district.
Yeah.
It is.
Because most of our, our groups are run by PTA.
Right, exactly.
Are under the auspices of PTA.
Right, right. And they have their own tax ID number.
And we don't have secondary groups, so we don't have all the.
I just wanted to be clear that that's not your PTO or.
No, we don't look at them.
Okay.
They're completely separate from you and you don't want to really have anything to do with them except have them help your kids.
Okay. So for the district, it'd mostly be lost textbooks or?
It's a minimal amount of money.
Yeah, okay.
Right.
Do you want to say something, Mona?
Yeah, I was just going to explain because we have such young children, these are not technically really ASBs. These are donation accounts. That each of our school sites have a Roble Bank account and they have donated money put in here, or they have a fundraiser that popular schools do a firework, so that's probably one of the more significant resources of money. And therefore, they're allowed to use that money for whatever that donation was designated for, but they have those individual accounts there. They also have the option of putting that money into our general ledger and having us cut a check for them through AP, or if with the correct paperwork, we can go ahead and write a check for them out of the Roble Bank account, requires two signatures. And what he's referring to is sometimes it's hard to make sure everything, every little pencil that might get sold to somebody gets received. It's probably the most common finding you will ever find in an audit, but for us, it's very small dollars. When you get to high school where you have your big, you know, your, your football money and your stores money, this type of thing, that's where you have.
I think what threw me was that it was under the title of ASB and I thought.
Yeah, yeah, I was an unofficial ASB. Our children aren't old enough to take minutes and vote.
No, 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 those are organized, there's three types, but yeah.
Thank you.
And I think, I actually didn't think it was fireworks, now that I'm, unless it was another district. Fireworks are going to be a big thing.
What we did is we ordered receipt books that were pre-numbered and issued them to every one of our school sites so that we could keep track and make sure that there were no missing receipts and that everything was being followed that way, instead of letting each, each school site have their, their own collection of receipts. And so this was one way to help try to monitor this better.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Okay, I just wanted to say that I'm so grateful to VTD, especially on that GAZU 68, on that pension liability. This was new this year. It was a nightmare. Like, many of these legislature changes that are coming through, you know, this company took the lead on this for all of their different districts, and it was horrendous amount of work for them and very complicated. And they get so much of the calculations and assistance to us that it was just invaluable. Thank you.
We were stuck. We had to get your numbers. We had a couple surprises along the way too, so. But with that, yeah, the finding was, was minimal there on that one. Not a lot of money, but it's, like Mona said, it's a very common finding if receipts aren't being written or doesn't seem like they're being written timely because that's mainly just to protect your teachers. So then somebody doesn't come later and say that not all the money was turned in, where all the money go, you know, and on and on and on and on. Anybody can make an accusation, so we think it's important to protect the teacher at the place.
Any questions from the board? Questions from the public? Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you. Good night.
Mr. President, if I, if. It's sergeant. It is an action item.
It is. It requires voting.
Do I have a motion to adopt the annual audit report issued in period 2015?
I move we approve the annual audit report.
I'll second.
Okay. There's been a motion by Mr. Hoffman, second by Ms. Ish. All in favor?
Aye.
Four zero, motion passes. Okay, we're going to go back to the information items. The resources.
Good evening, Superintendent Martinez, board members. I'm here to report that we didn't receive any Williams complaints for the month of October, not even December, and ask that the board approve the report that reflects that, the Williams quarterly report.
Is this an action item or?
It's just information, but if you do turn it over, it is actually something that requires. Oh, this is a report, I'm sorry. Yes, you're correct.
No questions?
Maybe this is like for a study session, but how do we inform parents other than just handing the information, you know, on the door of the classroom? Are there other ways of informing parents? Like, for example, do you have meetings in the fall where at the beginning of the school year, your parents are actually informed about the Williams, the Williams situation that they have, or what they can do if they see some type of discrepancy in regard to materials?
So having just completed the FPM, Federal Program Monitoring Review, and at that time, I was Director of Human Resource, and now one of my responsibilities was the director of duty, and it had dealt just with that, how to inform our parents. So what we did at the time, and what we're going to do moving forward, is when we begin the school year, there's various materials that we provide families when they begin the school year, and in the past, we've done it in the form of a parent rights notebook. So what we did is we sent out an addendum in December, adding information in terms of all the uniform, because I believe what you're referring to in terms of posting, information is the uniform complaint process, how they go about to completing that, correct? And what I'm sharing tonight is in terms of the areas of instructional materials, this was assignment of teachers and facilities, you know, there wasn't any complaints. But I guess in answer to your question is, we have that already, something that's sent out at the beginning of the year, and it's going to be sent out again at the beginning of, this time what we did, we had two parts. We had information that needed to be added, so it'd be more comprehensive at the beginning of the school year and it's provided by Lee Williams.
Also, one, another, another requirement for every English language advisory committee is to share parental rights. That's your number one thing that you do in your very first meeting, so all of this information is shared with our ELUX and certainly our DLEX at the beginning of each year. It's a requirement and for our federal program monitoring, it was not binding, with all the interviews they did to our parental groups, with our stakeholder groups, our migrant PAC meetings, I got to tell you, this district has their app together in terms of informing our, our Spanish-speaking parents from what I've seen and the meetings that I've attended and following the requirements and responsibilities for parental right notifications. So I'm comfortable right now that not only are the written notifications that were required to a mail-out based on our federal audit that we just went through, those were not findings that we had, and opportunities that exist right now that I've seen in practice and have attended those meetings are, they are actually informing those parents of those rights. I think our parents, and I'm seeing the activity here, I think they know what they have to do because they're doing it. Let me just say that. They actually have, I think, a pretty good handle on the procedural pieces of when they have a concern on what they're, what they're, what they do.
So they're well informed, because I, my concern is that if we send out information, not every parent is going to read it. I know, I know we can say it's on them, but many parents may not know how to read it or they just don't read it and they're not aware that this is, this is out there, this type of information is out there. Is, is there a possibility of having the, the school teacher, the classroom teacher also inform parents, like, for example, at a conference meetings or at a conference event, to inform the parent, this is, this is a Williams act, this is, this is, these are some of your rights, et cetera? And the reason why I'm saying this, I find this to be a very critical bit of information because, especially when you have a, a lack of resources, you know, even if you, if you have 25 students and there's one student who doesn't have the materials, that's very taxing on the child and it's very taxing on the teacher, and it doesn't lend to, lend itself to good, good education. So, I mean, I would like to see something like that. I would like to see something like the teacher pointing these things out to the parent, especially in, there's, I don't know if it's the fall or it's the spring, where we don't have kids going off to, our migrant kids leaving or going off on vacation, parents going off on vacation with their families, where we have more parents, there's more of a, of an attendance to either conferences or back-to-school nights where this is, this type of information can be disseminated much easier, much easier.
All of our schools, or most of our schools, I should say, not all, but our Title I schools and a Title I contract is shared with parents. It's an underwritten communication that is signed, and they actually have to sign it. And so that, again, spells out parents' rights and the, and the ability for them to become active participants on this. I don't know if, how schools do it here, but I know that some of the schools had those compact signed at their parent-teacher conferences on the first trimester. So there's multiple ways that I think we're doing this. I'm, you know, we can get you more information if you want more information, how this transpires at, at certain schools, but number one, we have no findings. Number two, our Chris Williams quarterly report was pretty good. And so based on those two reports that have come our way, plus the different validations that we've had, FPM happens every three to four years. We just had it last month, and we, we came away looking pretty good. So that scrutinizes us to the T around all of the things that you're very concerned about, and I'd be glad to share those findings with you. I mean, the, you know, the actual investigations that they did and the interviews that they did and the different ways that we communicate with our parents.
I think it's very valid, considering, you know. Zero complaints when no one knows how to make a complaint is not much of a accomplishment. All right.
So where are we here? Oh, local assessment program.
Good evening, superintendent and board members and team colleagues. I'm here to give you a little bit of information. The superintendent asked me to provide a brief overview on our local assessment program. A while ago, these were called benchmark assessments, and they were, they have a lot of designs and a lot of uses, but basically, they're to monitor student academic progress. Our assessments are the required areas of math and language arts, and it's to internally measure student progress so we can make adjustments to programs and adjustments to instruction. But it is awesome for us to evaluate the success of our programs, and this, our LCAP day and age becomes very critical. And we are now beginning the annual process of reviewing our local control accountability plan activities for those that are involving academic achievement of our students in, in specifically math and language, or it's our local assessment program. Information is very important in that. I do want to introduce to this team here, my team in Educational Services, that works on local assessment, some other important people that assist us, and we have Virginia Garza Nunez, who is our testing and student information principal and special assignment. We also have Ron Dilger, who's with us this year on curriculum and instruction. Additionally, in this area, we're very lucky that we have a very long partnership in this district with the mathematics coordinator at Monterey County Office of Education, Linda Dilger, who guides us in all things. She's one of our partners with our math and science grant. And another person who's very involved in math and guides us in our math program is Lee Howell, who is our California Math and Science Partnership Grant Program Manager for the district. So these are all real key players that assist us with developing our benchmarks and then also analyzing them. So, do I need the clicker? If I can figure out how to use it? So just to give you, I gave, you have some graphs, some charts, and these, Virginia developed this, and these show you basically the schedule and the names of the assessments that we give. We have some assessments that are given at face point, right, when students return in August, so that the incoming.